We will start with the invocation. Joyce, will you please lead us? And the pledge will be done by Steve.
Everybody stand, please.
Father God, thank you for this awesome day. Thank you for the people who are gathered here today. Bless the work that we do for Buckingham County. And cover us as we go to our individual.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Option of agenda?
So moved.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Establishment of a quorum. We have six of eight. Approval of minutes of August 23rd. Regular meeting.
So moved.
Second.
We have a first and a second. All approved. Or in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous. August 30th work session.
Move to approve and present.
Second.
We have a first, a second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Approved unanimously. Public comment.
Mr. Chairman, we do have three public comments, a phone message, and two that were emailed in. I apologize. Do we have any for public comment? Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. The comments that I was looking at was actually for the public hearing. There are no public comments this evening.
We'll close the public comments. Old business.
Yes, sir. The first case this evening for old business is going to be for case 21 SUP 290. This is for Apex Clean Energy and Riverstone. It was presented to you as an introduction in August, and there were two work sessions held on this case. The applicant, Apex Clean Energy, is here with us this evening. The property information for this case is Tax Map 17, parcel 8, contains 520.185 acres. Tax Map 17, parcel 9, containing 97.4. Tax Map 17, parcel 13, containing approximately 59.5 acres. And Tax Map 18, parcel 2, containing approximately 1286.43. Parcels are north of Bridgeport Road, east of Route 20, west of Hardware Road, in the Slate River Magisterial District. It's currently zoned A1. The request is that the applicant wishes to obtain a special use permit for a solar generating facility for the purpose of constructing and operating a solar photovoltaic module to produce up to 149.5 megawatts. The power generated will be linked to the electrical transmission grid via the existing 138 kilovolt overhead high voltage transmission line adjacent to the property. The applicant, Jimmy Merrick, with Apex Clean Energy, is with us this evening. If you'd like for him to come to the podium, I believe he may have a presentation.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Go on, nice to see y'all again. I put together a brief presentation just to introduce some new information. And for the sake that it's a public hearing tonight, if you could go to the next slide, please. My name is Jimmy Merrick. I'm a development manager with Apex Clean Energy. And today, I've talked to you a little bit more about just an overview of the Riverstone Solar Project. For those of you that are dialing in today or joining us in person that are just now coming tonight, I'll keep that brief. I went into very much detail on the August Planning Commission meeting. And so encourage folks to look at that recording if they'd like to see more as far as a presentation perspective from Apex. But mainly what I would like to talk to you all about today is that since we last spoke, it's clear that Viewshed was an issue and that the county wanted to make sure that the rural character of the community was maintained in the vicinity of the project. And so what we've done is we've done a Viewshed simulation analysis. And so it shows in detail, you know, before and after pictures along major right of ways or areas that, you know, passerbyers will be able to see the project. And it'll really show you kind of what it looks like now and then what it'll look like in five to seven years and then in five to 10 years as well. And so what I've done is, Steve, I don't think you have a copy, but I had three copies. They're up there with Pat. I think he's passed them around. So I have some physical copies, but I've also included some slides in the presentation. So if you look at your screen, you'll also be able to see it. So just to recap for the folks that are just joining us, Apex Clean Energy is proposing 150-megawatt solar project in northern Buckingham County. The project will be bordered by the south by Bridgeport Road and is divided through the center by Payne's Pond Road. And so it'll be on either side of Payne's Pond Road. The project will be, like I said, 150 megawatts. And so that's enough to power about 30,000 homes annually. This is a utility scale project and will be generating quite a bit of power. But with that, the county will see quite a bit of benefits from it. It represents about $190 million investment to the county. And as far as direct revenues, we worked with a third-party economist to look at the project and understanding the value of the materials that are going to be on the real estate there and then also the power that's going to be generated from the project. We estimate that the county will receive $14.8 million in revenues over the life of the project. In year one, actually, the Riverstone project would be the largest taxpayer in Buckingham County. And then as far as an environmental perspective, the project offers quite a few benefits from an environmental perspective, just the fact that it's a clean energy project. It works to decarbonize the grid and allows not just Buckingham, but the rest of the Commonwealth to transition to a cleaner transmission grid. And so this power does not require fuel. It does not require, it doesn't require anything to operate. There's very little moving parts. There's no off-gassing or anything like that. And so from like an air perspective, the air will be clean around the project. And it'll decarbonize the grid. It'll offset about 277,000 tons of CO2 every single year. To put that in perspective, that's the same amount of carbon that's actually sequestered by 308,000 acres of forests every single year. So this project has a significant impact, positive impact, on the environment, being that it's clean energy. And again, I encourage folks to revisit the August meeting if they'd like to see more information that I've presented in the past. But in light of the agenda today, I'll continue to move on. This is just another slide reflecting, the left column is the current agricultural use that the property is in for the project area. It's a 2,000-acre project area. It's warehouse or property. And over the 40-year life of the project, that property, if it stays in its current agricultural use, would be about $303,000 to the county. But with the proposed use you see in the right column there, we would anticipate that the county would receive 14.8, approximately $1 million in direct revenues from the project. And so it's a significant uptick in county revenues that the county can use for capital improvements or just to keep taxes low. Also during construction, there's going to be a one-point, there are a flux. Like during construction, there will be almost 500 jobs, about 480 jobs is what we anticipate. A lot of those, we think about 400 of those can come locally. Construction sector is one of the largest sectors in Buckingham County. And it's a pretty simple technology. And, you know, we'll be trying to source aggregate locally and excavation locally and installing, racking, and things like that. It's a pretty simple process. And a lot of those jobs can come from Buckingham County. And with that, so we have about 482 jobs. That reflects about 24 million in wages just during that one-year construction period. And then you'll have folks, you know, buying food at McDonald's, staying at hotels. You know, when you have that many people sort of coming in the area, that has an additional influx of revenues that the county can enjoy. And then just in state and local taxes, we anticipate that the project would generate almost $2 million in state and local taxes. And then the next slide, so this will basically be the conclusion of my PowerPoint is just walking through the Viewshed analysis that we've done. So given that Viewshed has been discussed in depth, what we did is we worked with StanTech, which is an engineering firm that we're working with their Williamsburg office. We had some folks up and we went out to the site. And we took photos. So each one of these dots represents a photo that was taken. And each one of them has a unique identifier, 1 through 6. And then the arrows you see is the direction that the photo was taken. And so you, and it was taken from a photographer. So it's about head level from that point, looking in that direction. And so you can reference back to this map as sort of we walk through, as we walk through it. But what we've done is we've modeled it based on conditions 11 and 12 that we've drafted is, you know, that we would leave existing vegetation along right of ways, along Bridgeport Road, and then along Payne's Pond Road, and then also along the perimeter of the project. And so we took into account all the current site conditions. These photos were taken basically a week and a half ago. And then what we did is we simulated what it would look like in five to seven years and then also like seven to 10, seven to 10 or 10 to 15 years. And so we'll go to the next slide here, but keep in mind sort of where these are located. So here's the location of photo 1. This is right where Payne's Pond intersects with Payne's Road. This is the most northern part of the project site. And it's looking to the southwest, mainly west, though. And so you can see there where, what we've done is we've tried to choose locations like where you actually have decent vantage points over the project. We chose higher elevations and areas where you had lower growth and tried to be really conservative as far as like what folks would actually see during construction and then into operations. And so we tried to locate it mostly at the intersection points so that they're easy to identify. But this is looking west from Payne's Pond Road and Payne's intersection point. And then, so this is the before. And then you go to the next photo. You see the trees will grow up to an extent there, right on the west side of Payne's Pond Road, where we estimate that you would not be able to see the panels. Those trees were planted in 2015. And, you know, this is five to seven years from today's date. So we're talking 2026 to 2027. Those trees would grow up even more. And you wouldn't be able to see the project looking to the west as you're driving down Payne's Pond Road. And if you go to the next slide, continues to grow. And then, you know, the trees right in front of you where we took that photo will grow and get taller and taller. And then if you go to the next slide, so here's the intersection of Bridgeport Road and Payne's Pond Road. This is the very southern portion of the project, looking to the northwest. As you can see, there's already quite a bit of existing vegetation there. And we would plan to leave 50 feet of existing vegetation, just as we've committed to in our conditions. And so the before picture, I think, is pretty clear what the next picture's going to look like. You can go to the next one. Not going to see anything there. You can go to the next one, even more so, continues to grow up. Next slide, please. So this is location 3. This is the very southeast corner of the site. And this is, I actually forget the name of the road. But if you're looking at the map, some of you have the physical copies of it and you can refer to the front page to see where it is. But this is photo 3, looking to the northwest. There's actually a few houses. Yeah, Diana Mill Road and Bridgeport Road on the very southeast pocket of the site. So again, there's a lot of existing vegetation already here. There's actually, most of the houses that are surrounding the project area are sort of located right in this area. There's about three or four houses here. And the project really only has maybe five or six houses in the entire project area. And so most of the houses, this is their current view across the street. You go to the next slide. We'll leave that existing vegetation. And some of that is actually hardwoods that'll continue to grow up and vegetate. And then the next slide. 10 to 15 years, slow-growing hardwoods will continue to vegetate there. And then if you go to the, so photo 4. Photo 4 is like right in the middle of Payne's Pond Road, looking west. And you can see here, this is similar to photo 1. This stuff is about five or six years old. If you go to the next photo, continues to grow up. You won't see it next photo, continues to grow up. And then like we said, what we've been talking about is that we would manage, manage the buffer in a way where we would do selective thinning and maintenance to make sure that we would have undergrowth growing up in a way that it would always screen the project over the life of the project. Even though lob-lolly pines by nature over time would lose their branches and grow taller, what we would do is we would thin that out. And we would allow the underbrush to continue to grow up and then selectively rotate trees within there and thinning it to make sure that it's maintained with the intent to visually obscure the project from folks that are driving by. And so that's a good representation of that, where you would have some tall trees, but you'd also have some younger trees that are really thick there and blocking the project's Viewshed. Next slide, so this is the youngest stand of trees in the project area. This is on Bridgeport Road, looking east. And you can see that like they've literally just planted some pines there. You almost can't even see them. This was cleared in 2020. And so they would have just planted pines here. If you go to the next slide, five to seven years, it's going to look exactly like what the west side looks like. And so we used that as our indicator because that was a very good rule of thumb. So if you're looking behind, if you're at the site, looking at this, standing at this location, the trees behind you would be exactly what this looks like in four to five years. And so that's what we've done here is we visually represented this. And or in five to seven years, this is what the site would look like. And then you go one more, and it would continue to thicken and grow taller. Now, we can keep going. Location 6. Going back to my comment where we wanted to try to be as conservative as we could, we took this photo from the highest elevation that was available to us. This is right on Bridgeport Road and the very southern corner of the project. And so you're basically standing on the property line here, just off the road, looking out. You can actually even see the Blue Ridge Mountains from here. This area was recently clear-cutted in 2020. Maybe, maybe a little bit longer ago, actually. And so, you know, you can see some pines there, re-vegeting some native grasses. And where you see in the distance sort of the, you know, plain out there, there would be solar panel infrastructure located in that area. And so you can imagine, if you go to the next photo, trying to be as conservative as possible, even from that highest elevation, with that area revegetating in the next five to seven years, it would be practically invisible. There is a chance where you would see tips of the solar panels. You know, maybe if you're jumping up and down or in a tall truck, you know, you might see a little bit more. But we would have that 50-foot vegetative buffer there. And we tried to be really conservative as far as the growth rates that we assumed with warehouses vegetation here. And then really conservative, like we went with sort of like the tallest height that the panels could be in this visual representation, just to, because we, you know, we're not in the business of making false promises. It's, you know, we wanted to make it clear that there is a chance where from some parts of the project, you may be able to see portions of the project. And but as that vegetation grows up, you know, we can't control the rate at which trees grow. Those trees will eventually grow up and it will screen the project very well. And so then if you go to the next photo, 10 to 15 years, that buffer will grow up quite a bit. And you would not be able to see, certainly in 10 to 15 years off of Bridgeport Road, you would not be able to see any solar panels when you're driving through there, unless of course you're passing by an access road, which would be fenced. And screening would go right up to where that access gate was and then sort of stop is for an entrance there, for a driveway entrance. But that's basically the conclusion of my presentation. I'll be available for questions for the rest of the night. And for the folks that are here in person or dialing in by phone, here's my contact information. Feel free to give me a call, any constituents or neighboring landowners or folks that are active in the community, be happy to take your call and answer any questions you may have and, you know, walk you through the project. But that's all I have for tonight.
I guess we're going to call you back after the public hearing.
That'd be fine.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate the time.
I'm going to open it up for the public hearing. Do we have anyone signed up?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we do. We have five individuals here signed up in person. We have one voicemail and two emails. Start with the voicemail and emails and then we'll move forward.
Yeah, that'll be fine.
Thank you.
Today, Monday evening, 6:00 PM. Catherine Timnakis, Glenmore District, Riverstone Solar Public Hearing. First, we are quite enthusiastic that our new neighbors plan building innovation for clean energy products. We are appreciative that you, the county administration, are welcoming solar farms, which is of great benefit for the local economy. Riverstone Solar projects employment in the coming years for more than 200 jobs. Clean, safe jobs. Yes, Riverstone Solar, being a profit-oriented corporation, must be monitored by the county. Strict guidelines are needed for the two-year building of the site, especially for environmental safety. Please approve the permits to establish this innovative clean energy industry. Thank you.
Next comment is from Kenda Honeman, District 5. And she says, "Thank you for considering 21st Century Energy. You can make history by bringing Buckingham into a new clean era. As you attempt this transition, please do the investigation as well as the investment and new proposals. Have you taken the time to research the cost or benefit to the county of large solar fields here? Have you examined the reports on cadmium telluride panels? Are these being suggested? Are you aware of the damage tornadoes cause to solar panel fields? Do you understand the threat to our firefighters if a wildfire occurs in a solar field? With so little knowledge about this relatively new technology, aren't we virtual lab rats, much the same as the over 50% of the county who are skeptical about COVID vaccines? Please take the time to learn about the consequences of approving an SUP for the 2,000-acre Riverstone Solar Project. Do not approve an SUP at this time. Thank you." The next email comes from Rebecca Cobb. She resides at 234 Quell Run Lane, one property over from the proposed project. "I wish I could be in person tonight but had other obligations. For the past two years, I've worked as a consultant for local governments. Many of my projects have been advising localities on solar applications on a state and national level. First, I'd like to commend staff on the conditions. They touch on the major impacts, soil disturbance, noils, noise, visibility, setbacks, road degradation, and decommissioning. There are a few ways these conditions can be strengthened to ensure protection for the county and neighborhood. I've seen too many localities disappointed after the conditions did not achieve what they thought they would. My suggestions for existing conditions are number 11. Instead of "with intent to visually obscure," change to "that shall substantially obscure." 11B, add, "but in all instances shall maintain obscuring effect." 12A, add, "minimum height at planting shall be four feet and planted buffers must contain a minimum of three staggered rows." 12A, change to "that shall substantially obscure." B, add, "but in all instances shall maintain obscuring effect." 13, add, "and located interior to the vegetative buffer so that it is not visible with the exception of at-access roads and transmission lines." 16, do not accept salvage value for the decommissioning bond. It is to the industry's benefit to subtract salvage value, but this leaves the county very vulnerable. Accepting salvage value was a mistake I made early on. If the project fails or ends before it is intended in life, the county will not have any money to decommission the project. Salvage value is seen only if and when panels are recycled. But the county will have upfront costs for decommissioning before the first piece of equipment can be moved. Most localities are requiring a bond to cover 100% of the estimated cost without any salvage value. I urge this as well. 24, add, "including but not limited to ENS and building inspectors." It is also important to add the following as new conditions or as the sub items, as new sub items to existing conditions. A, a performance bond reflecting the cost of anticipated fence maintenance and landscaping maintenance shall be posted. B, all seeding and planting must be completed prior to receiving a certificate of occupancy. If planting season has passed, the applicant may post a bond to cover the cost of all anticipated planting. C, the erosion and sediment control plan shall be prepared and implemented as a sequential progression, demonstrating that not more than 25% of the site be disturbed and unstabilized at any one time during construction. The erosion and sediment control plan will provide the means and measures to achieve stabilization of the disturbed areas to comply with this condition. While I suggest these for this project, they can or should be used for any projects. Thank you Planning Commission for considering these very important conditions and ensuring protections for the county and neighborhood. Rebecca S. Cobb." The first individual signed up to speak in person tonight is Marie Flowers, followed by Lori Collins.
I, do you have a, I guess I can stand on my tiptoes. Marie Flowers, the 3rd district. This project sounds good. I have one problem with the literature that they passed out. They say there's going to be over 400 jobs. That's during construction. Permanent jobs are six. But it was a very nice presentation at the VFW. And after having been to all of the hearings for the pipeline and the compressor station, my recommendation would be to get the opinion of somebody that's not involved with this. We have a couple of colleges, and it sounds really good. I just suggest, I think, you should have verification of somebody that's not interested but has the qualifications to be able to really speak about it and maybe give some suggestions. I feel like they're willing to work if there are reasonable suggestions for the benefit of the people of Buckingham. I think your job is, first of all, the safety of the people of Buckingham. And I haven't heard a lot of really bad stuff about solar. I just have never seen such a big project. And I think you ought to get a disinterested opinion before you say yes. It sounds real good, though. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lori Collins. Be followed by Martha Franz.
I'm Lori Collins. I live at 511 Blue Hair Lane. Recognize that, but can I look, can I show this? I'm from Vermont.
You talk on the speaker because that's recording. Thank you. I think it would help if you would remove the mask while you're talking anyway.
Okay.
Thank you.
Never know when you're supposed to wear them or not.
Well, let's.
All right. I'm from the state of Vermont originally, very much a very green state. The solar panels, you can see them from the highway. They have come leaps and bounds, you know, further than the state of Virginia. Because this has been a priority of theirs for years. So yes, we need clean energy. But in this picture here, I don't want to cry. I live here. Y'all can see that? That's, that's my. That's my backyard, my side yard, and my front yard. To grow the trees up, yes, absolutely would have to happen. But we can't just put a blanket over a pile of crap, okay? We can't just hide it there. We have to be stewards of our land. We have to be making choices that are good for the land, not just for energy. Yes, it's going to reduce our energy costs. Have any of you ever gotten a lower electric bill?
No.
No. No, and this is all going to go into a grid. It doesn't go right to Buckingham. It's going to go to the electric company, who can then sell their power at a reduced cost for them. And I don't know if anyone's ever traveled down Payne's Pond Road, but just to get from Route 20 to Blue Heron Lane, it's about two miles of dirt road, very rural. That's why we're here. The road needs to be graded on a monthly basis, or we washboard to the point of almost coming off. There is a one-lane bridge, I mean, a one-car bridge, not made for heavy vehicles. I don't know where the 200 employees are going to be coming in and out of on that road. I'm saying, okay, I am all for green energy. I think there's a lot of questions here that need to be answered prior to acceptance.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll answer one of your questions right now. You go ahead and be seated. You didn't know where the construction traffic was going to come in. All the construction traffic will be on entering and exiting the project off of Payne Pond Creek Road. That's one of the conditions we've already imposed upon them. So they won't even be coming up toward you.
Bridgeport, from Bridgeport.
From Bridgeport, yes.
Up Payne Pond.
Okay, was there another?
Yes, Martha Franz.
You might notice the resemblance. Lori is my sister. I also just found about this meeting yesterday. We were up in Vermont and got a message from our neighbor who owns the 200 acres around My issue, as my sister said, feel blindsided. And no, we don't come to the meetings. I don't know my neighbors. I spent 35 years working for the Army and Air Force Exchange Service, the last eight of which was in the Middle East. This was my happy spot, as mortars and rockets zoomed over. I was in Baghdad for five and a half years. This is my forever home. I drove 14 hours to get here to be to this meeting. I'm certainly not against solar. As my sister said, you see them everywhere, up in New England, so far, much further than we are here in Virginia. You see them on the cloverleafs of the freeways. What else can you do with that property? You can't. You know, people are getting on, people are getting off, and that's where they put their solar panels. But again, you know, I would be surrounded by these solar panels. And what about the security lights? I mean, there must be some security lights at night. I mean, one of the reasons I picked that property is because it's just pitch black at night. The stars are wonderful. The sound is nonexistent. I had a list that I gave to my sister as I was looking for properties. I wanted to be on a dirt road. I wanted that dirt road small enough to have a one-lane bridge. I wanted if somebody came to my property, that's all I'm going to hear. I didn't want to hear road noise. I wanted water around my property, and I wanted a lighthouse. Well, I got everything but my lighthouse. I just think the light, the security lights, you know, the towers, what is it going to do to my property value? And what is it going to do for my slice of heaven? Green energy, absolutely. All in favor. We had green-up day in Vermont when I was still in middle school, grade school, you know, just a few years ago. We went out and we picked up garbage on green-up day. And we learned, you don't throw stuff out of the car. You're going to go pick it up. You know, I just think there's, my biggest concern is I feel like it was underhanded, and I feel blindsided.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
I'll tell you, we're going to try to do a little bit better than even Vermont does. We've already put in there a 50-foot buffer. So you will never be able to see, once that buffer is in and established, you will never see this project. It's not going to be something that anybody wants to look at.
Not just looking, and you're not worried about what you see from the road. Understand where I'm located. In front of me, it's behind me and behind me.
And there will be a 50-foot buffer all three places. Okay, is there anybody else? Nikki?
Yes, sir. We have Reinhard Reader, or Ryder, I apologize if I, Reader. Reinhard Reader, followed by Ronald Doryer.
My name is Reinhard Reader. My wife Andrea and I own the property on 2737 Bridgeport Road. And we have one major concern that is some of the runoff from the property that is in consideration goes into our property. And we have some, now some erosion problems on an old logging road that goes on the border of our property or close to the border of our property. But then we also have a creek forming from the runoff going through our property and actually feeding into our lake. And what I want to know is if there was any kind of evaluation done, if there's any change in the runoff, runoff configuration, and in the amount of runoff. So, which would be very important for, you know, the continuation of the life of the lake that we have, you know? And so it would be most interesting if there was any such evaluation was done for the runoff. I've heard from other projects that there was a problem with runoff that was not in the first consideration, and so we shouldn't make the same mistake here then. That's basically what we have. Other concern is just wildlife and things, but I think there's plenty of, unfortunately, there's too much land here still available, so we can waste it on solar panels and don't have to worry about windmills and stuff like that. Otherwise, you know, we're in favor of green energy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Afternoon.
Afternoon.
Clean energy and millions of dollars for the county. Sounds like Christmas. Everybody's a winner, right? I just got a couple of questions. And what I want to find, I don't care about the buffer. It's behind the buffer that concerns me. The land hasn't going to be cleared off. Are there chemicals going to be used to kill the vegetation? That's my first question. Because if it is, I'm adjoining, I've got groundwater, well water. That's a concern to me. Plus, you've got the James River close by. That can be affected by any kind of a chemical used to kill the vegetation. The second thing is, like I said, I don't care about the buffer. It's behind the buffer. That's an ugly mess. And the second thing is, how much money, how much of that electricity is Buckingham County going to use? Is my electric bill going to decrease because of this great project? Not going to decrease a dime, is it? But it will affect somebody in another county, but I'm going to ugly up my county so somebody else can have electricity. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we do not have anyone else signed up to speak during the hearing.
And I will close the public hearing. Jimmy, you want to come back up to the podium? Okay, commissioners, anybody got any questions?
I just would like for Mr. Merrick to address a couple of questions that I feel like would probably be worthwhile discussion if you address some of the comments.
Sure. Yeah, yeah, I'd be happy to. Appreciate everyone coming to speak about the project. I'll try to read through my notes and hit it all. I wasn't able to catch everything. But for those of you that, if I missed your comment, just catch me up to the meeting. I'd be happy to speak with you afterwards or at another time, sit down with you, hit you about the project, and we can help get some of your input about it. First comment was from Martha Franz and her sister, at least the one in person here, that they do live nearby the project. We are setting back quite a bit from residential houses, and 200 feet, in fact, is what we're committing to in the ordinance. And the benefit to them is that they do have a lot of existing vegetation already around their property. And then, of course, we're going to leave the 50-foot buffer path that you referred to around their property. As far as the blindsided comment, I hate to hear that. You know, we always try to be really involved in the community well before we get to this process. I've been pretty active going back since March. We did a community meeting, actually, where I sent letters to all the neighboring landowners and their mailing addresses, so it didn't just go to their homes, it was wherever they were paying their taxes from. We also put it in the paper, too, that we were doing the community meeting. Been pretty involved in these hearings as well and speaking with organizations that have been active in the community. But, you know, my number is, my door is always open, so I'd be happy to speak with you both now and you and discuss the project in more detail. Comments that they raised were security, sound, and noise. So the project will have security fencing where the solar project is going to be located in the vicinity of their home. And that's really a FERC regulation, but there's no anticipated jump in security or anything like that. These things operate passively, and you all have a project already located on 60. And I spoke with Fire and EMS the other day. I sat down with them to discuss an emergency action plan for when the project is operating. And then they said that they didn't have any calls on the project to date. In fact, the only call that they had was during construction. A worker had a heart attack. So it really introduces very little to know, like, security issues in the neighborhood. And that's just a good, that's just a good example of that. Sound, we're going to have very minimal lighting at the project. It operates passively. We might have some lights at the access gates, and in our conditions, we committed to making sure that those lights are pointed downwards. But those gates are necessary for EMS and for operating the project and maintaining it. But, you know, we can work with you to just make sure they're not pointing right at your house or anything like that. And it won't be, there are no access points located in the vicinity of your house, and so y'all will be well set back off of that as well. And then sound, so the only thing that really generates sound within the project are the inverters. It's what converts DC to AC electricity before it goes on to the grid. The inverters do provide a slight hum, but those inverters are going to be located to the interior of the project. And so I encourage you to drive by the solar project on Route 60. You can stand at the fence line. It doesn't make any noise. And our project will be the same. Our inverters will be located internally to the project. And we've committed in our conditions that from the property line, it will be below 50 decibels. And so that's basically ambient noise, you know, birds and wind and things like that. And so you won't hear anything beyond that, and, you know, we'll be required to meet those requirements. And so you'll still be able to see the stars. You're not going to hear it all the time. And then as far as the fact that, like, your home is, you know, it is very close to the project, but the fencing isn't going to be around the entire perimeter of the project area. It's actually, will only be fencing specific arrays. And so it'll be sort of, kind of a bunch of mini projects, almost, if you think about it like that. And so we delineated all the wetlands and streams in the vicinity of the area. And I was just looking at the site plan with regards to the location of your house. And with the location of where you all are located, you do have the benefit of being right directly near multiple wildlife corridors that we have located in the project area. And so you're still going to have wildlife. You're going to have some probably really good deer hunting back there. There's some good wildlife corridors there where, you know, animals will still be able to pass through the project and, you know, right to where they have their house. And you can reference the site plan that's in the application as well. And so I count, one, two, three, three wild, three primary wildlife corridors out of the seven that we have that are all feeding to the general location where their home is. And so I would hope that that would help ease some of their concerns with regards to that. That's most of what I was able to write down with regards to their comment.
There was a concern about two of the landowners on regards to water quality runoff.
Yep, yep, water quality. That was my next one, Mr. Reinhardt. So, ENS and stormwater, it's a very lengthy process for these projects. Takes about six to nine months to get an erosion and sediment control permit through DEQ in the county. And then stormwater as well. We're going to, if you look at our site plan, we have retention basins located throughout the project area. And the main point of all of that is to catch stormwater, slow down its velocity, and buffer those areas to prevent, you know, erosion and sediment to getting into the streams. Something I personally care a lot about, being an outdoorsman, and there is a full guidebook that we have to follow to make sure that all the stormwater calculations and ENS stuff is to spec, to DEQ. And so I understand that, like, erosion and sediment is a concern, but the project will be engineered to make sure that that's handled and that, you know, he won't have any water quality issues in his pond or in his stream nearby his house. And in fact, it might even improve the water quality where he's located with the addition of all this, you know, new sort of erosion control measures that currently are not there. And so, you know, when a warehouse or logs it, there's really not much from an ENS perspective as far as, like, infrastructure or anything like that. There's no rocks or stormwater retention ponds or anything like that. Like, we'll have that. And so for the next 40 years, you know, he actually might benefit from a superior water.
While you're on that one, Jimmy, you might want to talk about what you're going to do with the bare ground and how soon you're going to do it.
Sure. Yeah, so I'm not in construction, and so I'll speak at a high level. I'm not an engineer or in construction. But at a, from a basic perspective, what we look to do is, we try to locate infrastructure where the ground, like, where the slope presents itself, right? So like on the top and rounded knolls and things like that, sure, there's going to be some grading, certainly is going to be grading on any construction project. But where there is grading, our goal is to do everything that we can to stabilize that ground immediately. We'll use a turf grass blend or a fescue blend to throw that seed down, and it'll be the quick-growing stuff that'll start to stabilize within seven to 10 days. You're seeing green. We'll use all of those measures that we sort of have in the handbook, and we'll be abiding by DEQ. And I'd be happy to have somebody, you know, that's more qualified than myself, to speak to the ENS protocols that will be required to do for this project. And I'd be happy to have them, you know, speak with you individually or even at the supervisor hearing if this project progresses to that point. And we can get into the weeds about erosion and sediment, for sure. That's most of what I was able to write down.
There was a question about chemicals, too. Do you, what kind of chemicals, chemicals you use?
Chemicals, yep. So we don't use chemicals for site prep. You know, we'll have to remove stumps where necessary, which is throughout the project area, but we We'll have to remove stumps where necessary, which is throughout the project area, but we don't need chemicals for that. There's no reason to use herbicides, you know. I'll have to bring in our pre-construction side to confirm, but it won't be to, if we do use chemicals, it's not gonna be to a large extent. You know, we're not gonna be dumping chemicals on the whole thing, you know. We'll plant, you know, native grasses that, you know, won't require chemicals. And then as far as, like, the panels go, there was a comment with regards to chemicals in the panels. This is a proven technology. This stuff has been around for 40 years or so. It's solid-state materials in the panels. Ninety percent of it is glass, aluminum, copper, very safe. There's no liquids in there. There's study after study has been done, and it shows that there are no chemicals that get leased into the ground from that. So they are safe from that perspective, too, if you think about, like, the actual equipment that the panels are made out of and the materials. They're safe.
Do you have an estimate of the permanent employees after the completion of the solar farm, if it's approved?
Yes, sir. So during construction, we estimate about 480 jobs during construction. There will be a huge influx of jobs during construction. Now, we're not hiding from the fact that during operations, there's only about six full-time equivalent jobs. Most of that's gonna be landscaping, cutting the grass around the panels, maintaining the stormwater features, keeping sticks and branches and stuff out of them, making sure that they're clean. We also have a remote operations center based in Charlottesville, Virginia, where we would have some higher-paid staff remoting the facility or operating the facility remotely from Charlottesville. But we would have six full-time equivalent jobs. And so some might think, okay, well, you only have six full-time jobs for the 40-year life of the project. But this project is also gonna generate substantial tax benefits, and it's gonna put no additional strain on county infrastructure. It'll be 14.8 million over the 40-year life of the project that the county can use to invest in capital expenditures or just keeping taxes low. And we don't need water. We don't need, you know, miles of water, miles of sewer that the county would have to invest in. We don't need any money from the county to bring this project forward. We're not introducing, you know, residence, you know, 40 to 50 residential homes in this area that, you know, we're gonna have 100 kids being introduced into the school system that taxpayers would then have to pay for those kids. This is really money for the county with no additional strain on county infrastructure, really little strain on Fire and EMS and anything like that. And so it's little that the county has to do, and sure, there's not a lot of full-time equivalent jobs once the project's operating, but the county still benefits tremendously from it. As I previously said, year one of operations, Riverstone Solar will be the number one largest taxpayer in the county. About four times larger than Kite Knight Mining. Second largest taxpayer in the county, or would be with our project.
Ashley, do you have anything?
I don't have anything for Jimmy.
Jimmy, I'd like to throw out one thing here. In 11 and 12 both, we refer to native vegetation. I think that in the interest of everybody, we should probably drop the word native. It's just, we're not saying you can't use them, but what is native? You know, is it native to that site? Is it native to Virginia? Is it native to North America? Let's just drop native. And then, you know, we don't wanna say we can't use something that we need there. If there's a particular bush or shrub that works, just because it's not native, we should not preclude it to start with. But I'm gonna recommend that we drop the word native throughout the text.
Yeah, that would be fine.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
When we met last on September 14th for the work session, the conditions were something that the planning commission had been working on for a couple of weeks. Would Mr. Merrick have a most recent copy of conditions resulting from those conversations on August 30th and September 14th to present to the commission?
Yeah, I have, we're going, I do have the latest set that I've been communicating with Pat on. I believe the commission has conditions from the last meeting, correct?
From the last meeting, but any revisions that have resulted from?
Yeah, so in discussions with Pat and other members of, just go up to the red lines. Okay. In discussions with Pat and other members of the commission.
I've got so many sets of conditions, I don't know which one I'm supposed to be looking at. Is this the one with the yellow lines in it or the one before or after that one?
The yellow lines are the last, most updated that were presented in a public forum on September 14th. And I believe after the most, the discussions that were held on September 14th were asking for other changes and revisions, one being the traffic plan, which I think we had set in highlight for '29. I'm just wondering what Apex offering since?
Since the last meeting, if you have a copy with changes that are highlighted in yellow, that's the most recent publicly discussed copy. Since then, Pat, you and I have had many conversations, and then I believe Joyce and Ashley also weighed in specifically on a few conditions. So I think constituents will probably be happy to hear that we've been busy trying to get this thing right, making sure that we're accounting for everyone that's in the vicinity of the project. But for, I can, what I can do is walk through, I have a red line version of the latest set. I'm not sure if you have printed copies of them, but I can at least walk through the red lines and make sure that we're all on the same page.
I think the issues revolved around 11, 12, the traffic plan, possibly pollinator, which we added as 27 or 28, so.
Okay, so I can hit those. So the condition 11 is prob, 11 and 12 are the ones that directly relate to view shed and buffering. And so we've been focusing on those quite a bit. In the latest set here, we removed applicant will use best efforts and replace to a shall. The applicant shall retain at least a 50-foot buffer of existing native vegetation and timber with the intent to visually obscure the project from the property line. And with the, and then understanding that, like, we would be managing that buffer with the intent to visually obscure the project, right? And not with the intent to just grow those pines really tall, right? It, like, it provides an intent to, like, managing that buffer, so that's understood. And then B, we added an event, another sentence in the last sentence of B, where in the event that health of the vegetative vegetation within the buffer area is compromised and no longer visually obscures the project, the applicant will plant a new buffer, including native timber, evergreen, cedars, or other native vegetation as determined by the applicant with the advice of a professional arborist or forester. Commissioner Bo recommended that just now that we remove native. But basically, what this does is it covers us where, we've sort of covered all bases, right? Where we're saying, we're gonna leave existing vegetation. In areas where there's not existing vegetation, we'll plant new vegetation. And then in the event where five to 10 years from now, we suffer from a drought or a disease or there's something happens to that vegetative buffer where it dies and is no longer visually obscuring the project, we'll replace that vegetative buffer so that, you know, we can make sure that it continues to screen the project for the life of the project. And so we're sort of covering all of our bases and keeping things flexible from sort of all scenarios based on sort of what the existing vegetation presents to us at the time of construction, and then we can make that decision based at that time. And 12 basically just includes the same exact comments, because 12 is more, talks about screening as well, but specifically to along right aways. 13, we added that the fence just must be installed on the interior of the vegetated buffer. Just making it clear that the screen not just blocks the solar equipment, but also the security fence that would be installed. And so we just made that one clarification. Access, condition 19, that signage for each access gate must be there. So we had committed to having signs around the perimeter of the project, but just a clarification here that we're putting signage along, like, right on the access points. For folks that are driving by that wanna contact us, there's gonna be 24/7 contact information. And also for Fire and EMS, you know, they'll know exactly how to access the site and be able to address any emergencies in the interior of the project. And then condition 24, the applicant will be held financially responsible for county contracted inspectors during the construction phase of the project. So this was removed and actually included in our, in a sighting agreement that we're working with the county on. The sighting agreement is a contractual agreement between Apex and the county where we'll cover compensation for various things. And so we thought it would actually be better to remove that condition from here as far as the conditions and then include them in the sighting agreement, which we will still be abided, will still be required to meet anything within the sighting agreement. And it allows us to compensate the county for third-party inspectors. Understanding you have limited ENS staff and limited staff of building and zoning, we'll compensate the county, you know, for third-party inspectors for plan reviews and to make sure that all the ENS and stormwater features are up to spec throughout the duration of the construction of the project. And then for the long-term operation of the project, you know, it'll be much less maintenance. And so it's our hope that county staff can keep up with it from there. And then in our last meeting, we did commit to restricting the use of Payne's Road, Georgia Creek Road, and Quail Run Lane for access to the project area during the construction phase of the project. This was actually already addressed in our application, and it just didn't make it in the conditions. And so we thought it was prudent to include that in the conditions. And so we've committed to during construction, only accessing the interior of the project from Bridgeport Road, but also from Payne's Pond Road, and then not exceeding Payne's Pond Road to the north where the project ends. And so that'll prevent any and all construction traffic from, you know, north of Payne's Pond Road, from the 20 entrance, that concrete bridge there, there'd be no construction traffic on there, no construction traffic near where y'all will come in on your driveway. You know, along Georgia Creek Road and Quail Run Lane to the west where Mr. Doryer is located. There'll be no construction traffic coming in on those roads and, you know, during construction. So we added that condition in there to make sure that sort of their way of life is maintained during the construction of this project. And then during operations, very little traffic. One to two pickup trucks a week, maybe, just for landscaping activities. Like I said, the project will operate passively and. And then the last condition is there is a condition that was in there to address, let me pull it up. I'm with you, Pat. We have quite a few copies here. I just don't wanna get this one wrong. There it is. Sorry. Bear with me. In order to prevent sediment and erosion and manage runoff and provide ecological benefit, the facility shall plant native, pollinator-friendly native plants, shrubs, trees, grasses, and wildflowers. We sort of just discussed that earlier on in this meeting, but also we, as the applicant, would recommend removal of that condition just because we understand that the intent is good there and we get it. But there is a really thorough and in-depth manual for ENS protocols with DEQ. And it's really important that we stabilize that ground as quickly as possible and we're not sort of chained to using a specific type of species or something like that. You know, it's really important that we use, like, a turf grass or a fescue blend, something that's gonna start growing really fast and not be sort of finicky, you know, based on the type of year or the soil conditions, you know, to make sure that, you know, we can, we can keep up with the construction of the project and abide by all the DEQ protocols. And so that's really the only condition, every other condition introduced by the commission, perfectly fine with accepting all of those. And then we've even added a few more, you know, in discussions. So I think that pretty much covers it. To be honest, I'm not completely sure if all of you have the exact copy that we're working off of, but I'd be happy to email it out to all of you, and I'm sure Nikki has it as well. We can all on the same page.
I think it would be helpful if you just emailed it to the other members of the commission. I finally remembered that I had it on my phone.
Yeah, right, great, good. Yeah, and I've been discussing the project with the Board of Supervisors as well, and there is a mutual understanding that we'll continue to refine these conditions. We've kept that, and we'd be happy to continue to work with the county on all the conditions. But that's the latest as far as all the discussions that we've had.
So you're saying you wanna remove 28, condition number 28?
That the pollinators?
That's the one on the sediment erosion management?
Yes, that's correct.
But it also says at the end that the project will be seeded with the trees and everything within three months?
It'll be seeded well, well before that.
Well before that.
Yeah, 90 days is too long.
It'll be seeded during, during construction, almost, almost immediately in order.
So for homes, like these young ladies were talking about a while ago, is there any way you can take care of those first and put, make sure that it's substantially covered around the homes? If you have to do any planning or if you do anything extra?
As far as screening and the, for the buffer, for the view shed? The benefit that they have in the location that they're in is there's mature trees already in that vicinity. I have all of the trees there that's on the warehouse or property is, was planted in 2015 or back in 1999 and 1997. I have some stand data. There was, it looks like here, a recent clearing in 2020 in a very small corner sort of near the vicinity of their project where, you know, we can, we can certainly look into that. But most of the property for the area that are existing mature vegetation, and then there is, there is, you know, wooded areas as well, wooded areas. But, you know, like I said, we can try to work something out. She's got three sides, I'm looking at it.
So if you could take care of it and make sure that that's one of the first. That's one home, but I mean, there's probably other homes, too. You can check all them out. I know it's a lot to do, but I mean, it's just something to help the people in the area.
Do you have any more questions from anyone?
Well, I'd like to, Mr. Chairman, if we would like to take just a minute and open up to the board for some of the recommendations, suggested recommendations from Mrs. Cobb. Most of them seem primarily this clean housework, cleaning up. But I did wanna talk specifically about the, accepting the salvage value. I think that might be just a quick discussion on that and then the other three, A, B, and C that she put down at the bottom. Sort of like to see what the opinions of the planning commissioner are.
I think it's really more of a legal question than something that we should decide here.
Well, I'd agree with you on the salvage thing.
Mr. Chairman, in regard to the salvage value, the decommissioning agreement would address that. It is a very prevalent trend in the state now that you do not calculate salvage value when you calculate the decommissioning. What Ms. Cobb is suggesting is what is being done in most jurisdictions. Decommissioning agreement, that would clearly come into play at that time. One other comment while I happen to be at the mic.
Right.
Since we are talking about a sighting agreement, the board does, there's some consideration of whether you should need to make a, what's called a 2232 decision in conjunction with the comprehensive plan. We anticipate that sighting agreement being completed. We anticipate that siting agreement being completed fairly quickly. And in the event that it, uh, you send us on and even if the siting agreement, uh, discussions should fall apart, then we'll come back and ask you to make a determination on 2232 filing.
Thank you, sir. The other?
Uh, just the last three points she had, A, B, and C. A being performance bond reflecting the cause of the anticipated fence maintenance and landscaping maintenance shall be posted. And then, you sort of discussed just, just a while ago, the seeding. All seeding and planting must be completed prior to receiving a certificate of occupancy. If planting season has passed, applicant may post a bond to cover the cost of the anticipated planning.
I don't ever recall us requiring of a bond of anybody on their fencing or maintenance. I don't know that that's something we want to get into. I mean, how the rest of y'all feel about it?
I'm just bringing it up for discussion.
I understand. I'm just telling you how I feel about it. I think it's to their best interest to make sure their fencing is ad- adequate. They got an awful lot of liability if the fencing-
I, I don't disagree with that.
And I don't know that we've ever required anybody to, uh, post bonds on, uh, planning. And certainly something we can start, but it's never been required to my knowledge. You know, I, I, I don't know, you know, you you can cover every base. And you remember the, when this thing goes back to about three weeks ago? And we got fourteen hundred pages to read in the next three days? If that's what you want to do, I mean, just keep adding stuff here.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes.
Uh, uh, you were speaking a while ago on the buffer. It doesn't seem like you have anything planned to, to, you're not going to plant anything else other than what's native there. Am I correct on that? You're, you're just going to use the vegetation? I, I was under the impression that you would be planting buffers and doing things, and I don't quite understand it. Uh, in the permit conditions, uh, I thought you would be planting things to take care of that.
Yes, sir. So, um, what the intent of those conditions are is to, we have a fifty-foot setback from property lines. And in that fifty-foot setback, uh, we would, we're committing to just leaving that existing vegetation there, um, because it is all, uh, you know, evergreen trees, right? And, uh, there's a lot of well-established existing vegetation that does a really good job already of screening the property. Um, you know, the alternative to that is if you look at like the project on Route 60, that project also had a lot of existing vegetation, but then they removed all of that during construction. And you can see right through it, right? You know, another, another thing that you can do is just remove all of that existing vegetation and then plant, you know, three to four-foot evergreens spaced fifteen feet out. And they're going to need fifteen years to fill out to provide like a good, you know, vegetative screen. And so, we're lucky with this project that we already have substantial vegetative screening as a buffer in existence, where all we have to do is sort of just leave that and not remove it. And it will, it will work to, um, shield the project very well. But in the conditions, what we did say is if there are areas where there's just, you know, inadequate existing vegetation in existence in that part of the project, that we are committing to replanting new buffer there. Um, you know, and it would be smaller trees, you know, on fifteen-foot centers. The language and the condition dictates, you know, what we would have to plant there. And then again, if anything dies down the road, you know, we would have to replace that as well. And so, you know, tha- that's basically a, you know, what we've committed to for the, for the project.
Steve, if I might make a suggestion. On, uh, Payne's Pond Road, everything on the right as you go in off Bridgeport is the area that we're concerned with. On the left, if, if you've been down that road lately, you'll notice you can't see anything. Those are five-year-old pines. They were planted five years ago.
They're going to grow quite a bit and, you know, you can see right through them.
Well, that's why we're allowing them to trim and maintain the buffer. You can go in there, you can trim, you can thin. The, the reason they do that is because there's not enough sunlight getting down to the understory. And when you thin and so forth, you get the sunlight down and the, uh, jungle keeps growing.
Exactly right. So, we, we're working on a maintenance plan, um, in discussions with Warehouser. And it doesn't have to be Warehouser that helps us with it. It can be any professional forester or arborist. But like Pat said, as those trees grow up, naturally, um, they would lose their branches and they would be thinned out. And it wouldn't act to visually obscure the project. But that's because most of those properties that you see, they're being managed to improve the growth rates for those trees. But what, what we can do is we can thin them out and manage them in a way where, when you selectively thin trees in, in there with, once they've reached like, you know, ten years old or something, you go in and you selectively manage a few trees and, and mechanically remove those, then the trees that remain there in existence, they're going to start seeding like crazy. And then you're going to get more sunlight, like Pat said, introduced into that area. And then you're going to get more young saplings growing up. And so, we would manage it with the intent to basically always maintain sort of young pines within there. And so, you would basically have staggered, different staggered ages of pine. And you'd just be, you know, there's four to five rows of pines in that fifty-foot buffer where we can quite easily, you know, manage, manage that to just make sure that there's always some young stuff in there that's going to be, you know, visually obscuring it at, at head level there. And we can do that with very little effort, honestly. About every five years, we'd go in and like-
I think this is where we should probably heed some of Ms. Cobb's what seem like clerical changes, because we know what we're trying to say in our conditions, but as she alludes to in her email, uh, our conditions may be strengthened so that they achieve what we want. Um, I think some of the ambiguity that there may be will also create loopholes. So, like her first one, um, changing it clerically to just say substantially obscure, I think would make our residents, that seems to be the sticking point. Most people just don't want to look at it. So, some of those clerical things might clear up some of the, some of the ambiguity that people are having concerns about.
Questions? Do they have any further thoughts or questions?
Or do you want to change what she was saying or not? It'd be twelve A and eleven A. Two of them, I see, it might be somewhere else.
Fine. I could tell you the buffer that they have planned, we'll do a whole lot thicker than the three rows that is being suggested in this group of things here.
Yeah, be quicker right now, too.
Exactly. You know, the, the whole thing is, we don't want to look at it. We don't want any of y'all to have to look at it. So, we're trying to get a buffer there. Ride down Route 60, you can see how we screwed up down there. There's your rows of pines in front of it, that tall.
Or none at all.
Hey, if you want, uh, I, I don't think you can talk right now. There's no objectives.
So, what do you think about the, uh, they wanting to take away 28?
I'm going to go back to get, I'm telling you, there's conditions everywhere on my desk here.
Alright.
Give me just a moment. I'll show you 28, Johnny, when I get it.
Okay. I don't have it on my page here.
Should be on the second set of conditions. Yellow.
Oh, I gotta go to the, get to it. Edition 28, you're talking about?
And that's what he asked for, to be removed.
I don't think so.
That's one we ain't been long at it, but-
The applicant will be restricted from using Payne's Road?
No, that, that's twenty-nine. Twenty-eight is the one with the, uh, erosion and sediment.
It's twenty, is number twenty-eight on the one that he's working from is the one I just read you about the restricting Payne's Road, Georgia Creek Road, and Quail Run Road for many access?
Yeah, I think we'll leave that on it. But I mean, I thought he wanted the one that said the, uh, prevention of sediment erosion management.
Oh, no, they're not trying to get out of that, I don't think, if I heard him right.
He was just saying that he's, he's got all those things that's making him do it, if you want to take that, I, I guess. You want to speak on that again, just what you said about 28?
It's the one that was talking about planting flowers and, uh, stuff. And what he was saying was fescue is much more efficient. I, I, I don't see any point in not removing it. It's going to be covered in the, uh, erosion and sediment control that, uh, they have to submit.
Okay.
In fact, the people are going to be a whole lot better off, protected from this project than they are with the way it is right now, under the timber growing. And I know what you're talking about with your pond getting sedimented in. I've got a pond on my own place. It's eight acres. It was thirty feet deep when I dug it. And I dug it about forty years ago. And in the last thirty years, it's been filling in with the sediment coming off of a cut over directly above my property. My deepest point in my pond is now fourteen feet. So, there's sixteen feet of silt in there someplace. But I know exactly what you're talking about. But there is no protection for that from agriculture, but there is from this project. There will be sediment ponds and so forth. So, you will have protection, a whole lot more than you have right now. Well, we've been doing this case now for about five weeks, every, every Tuesday, Monday night.
Yeah.
Have we pretty much answered everybody's questions?
Seems like it.
And we want to make a motion and do something here?
Mr. Chairman, I will, uh, make a motion and move this forward to the Board of Supervisors with the conditions changed that you took out native. And, uh, would like it understood that the, which it does, it's protocol, but the Board of Supervisor has the right to review all the minutes, all the conditions, excuse me, and some of the suggestions that have been provided tonight.
Alright, so you'll remove 28? Are you going to add the two that, uh?
Oh, that's right. They, he did, well, mine didn't have a twenty-seven.
Okay. Uh, it'd be eleven A, which says it substantially obscure. And then it'd be twelve A and eleven A.
Right.
Change it from visually obscure to substantially obscure.
So, you got eleven A, one added?
Yeah, just change it verbiage on, uh, eleven A and twelve A.
Yeah. What do you got? There really ought to be twelve B. Change to that substantially obscure.
Right, not the part about the, yeah, the stack.
And eliminate condition twenty-eight about the flowers and take out native species.
Right.
Correct?
Right.
Native, native, take out native.
Native plants, yeah, okay.
Nikki, did you get all of that?
Yes, sir.
You're very good.
Did somebody second his motion?
Seconded his motion now, yeah.
We have a first and a second on the floor. All in favor of forwarding it to the Board of Supervisors, raise your hand, your right hand. One, two, three, four, five of six. See if I can dig through these conditions and find the next item here. Want to call it? Nikki?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, the next item that's under Old Business and up for more discussion is 21 S U P 285. Applicant is Impact Power, and the landowner is Larry and Deborah Davis. Property information that we have is Tax Map 114, Parcel 2. It contains approximately thirty-six point four-two acres. It's located on Gravel Hill Road, State Route 617, currently Zoned A1. The request tonight, or the request originally in August, is to obtain a special use permit for a solar generating facility for the purpose of constructing and operating a solar energy generating facility for up to two megawatt, uh, photovoltaic community solar garden. This was introduced in August, and there were two other work sessions. Evan Carlson is joining us via Zoom. Scott Aronson is here with us tonight to discuss this project and answer any questions and concerns from the commission.
Hello, how are you?
Fine, thank you.
How you doing? So, um, a lot of the questions today brought up, or a lot of the questions about solar, some of them were brought up, uh, by the previous company that just came here. Our project is a little bit different, um, and, you know, I'll try to keep it brief. Obviously, I know you guys have already had a long night and try to explain some of the differences and then go from there. Um, so, uh, if we could go to the next slide, please. IPS has been around since ninety-one. Um, our bread and butter, and ninety-one obviously is a very long time for a solar company to be around. Our bread and butter is something called community solar. Now, community solar is just that. It's solar for the community. It's different than utility scale solar in, in both how it's constructed and the purpose. Go to the next slide, please. Now, the best way to describe what community solar is, is think of net metering. It works off the principle of something called net metering. The traditional model of net- The traditional model of net metering, you think of rooftop solar. Somebody buys panels, puts them on the roof, they pay for the panels, they put them on the roof, and then they get a bill credit for the amount of electricity that they produce. Now, community solar works in a similar way, and it's designed for people that want to take part in solar that either don't have space to put their panels on the roof of their house, or don't want, or don't have the money or the ability to pay for solar panels. So, how it works is it's done through legislation in Virginia, and the legislation in Virginia is new, and this legislation says that companies like IPS can build these projects. Now, you heard from the previous group about a project that was huge. These aren't that big. These, the maximum size that it will allow us to build are about 5 megawatts. That's a good example of what a 5 megawatt project looks like. The projects that we have, and we have two of them, are significantly less than that. So, they allow people like IPS to build these projects, and then essentially what they do is they get subscribers. Subscribers are members of the community. Oftentimes, they're municipal buildings, they're government, they're people who subscribe for the period of the country. And essentially, what they do is, in exchange for subscribing, we use their bill credits, and they get a bill rebate. So, IPS is happy because instead of paying the wholesale rate of electricity, or getting paid the wholesale rate of electricity, which is what you get paid for the utility scale projects, we're getting the retail rate of electricity, or near the retail rate, minus whatever they give as a rebate, which might be 5 or 10% of a discount on their electric bill. So, yeah, so that, so that's kind of, you know, it's a community thing. It's designed for folks in the community to take part and save on their electric bill. There's also a lot of actual physical differences in the panels. The biggest one that you're gonna notice is that most of the time, and sometimes this isn't true, and I don't know specifically about the, the large utility scale projects, I drove by the one on 60, and I couldn't find the point of interconnection, but most of the time, when you get these really, really large projects, they go into the high transmission lines, those big, humongous transmission line networks. With these, this power actually goes directly into the distribution lines, meaning those 12 KV line power that, that's going right up to, you know, that's going and feeding into many of the different buildings. So, it goes right into the power. It's, it's, even though, you know, you could be, you don't necessarily have to be on the lines in order to subscribe, the actual power that's being generated is going directly into the local community. And local community can subscribe, even if it's not on the same feeder, and actually save. So, it's really designed for the community to save electricity and, you know, and also be a good program. So, there's two videos that kind of show a little bit about, that we have. One of them is talking about a farmer, or that gives it from a farmer's perspective. The other one has more information about the specifics about how we build these projects. The big things that we should know is that we don't use cement for anything except for a small equipment meter pad that's, I think, about 12 by 12 in the corner. We don't use cement for the footings, essentially it's I-beams that are pounded into the ground. And we use a vegetative seed mix that goes underneath the, the panels, and we'll get more to that later. I'll show you the two videos. It's got some very inspirational music. You could ignore that, and we could go ahead. So, the next, the next one should be the first video talking from the farmer perspective.
We are on Aitkins Hidden Acres Cheese and Buffalo Ranch. We're in Center City, Minnesota, which is about six miles from the border with Taylor's Falls and St. Croix Falls on the St. Croix River. I've always been very conscious of burning fossil fuels and things like that. From a large family, so I have a lot of nieces and nephews, and I got grandkids and stuff, so it's that, you know, and it's just for humanity. It just doesn't make sense to keep polluting the atmosphere. So, in 2011, we started investing in solar to help offset power electricity. I started with Eric and IPS, and we got the panels up in 2012. I feel it's more than paid for itself already. And then after we had that up, I was approached again by IPS and asked if I was interested in putting in a solar garden. So, other people could have solar panels where they maybe couldn't or didn't want the panels on their property, they could be on my property, and I would lease them the land and then put up the solar array. So, I thought this was a very good idea, not only for me, but it would be good for the environment. It's kind of a feel-good situation. So, now we put in this 5 megawatt solar array, and we have local subscribers, businesses, and even our school district, which Sun Lakes has subscribed. They get bill credits from Excel. Now that it's built, it's gonna be around for 25 years producing electricity, so it's gonna be good for the whole community. Working with IPS has been great. This was one of the first ones we did in the area, so they had a lot of questions to answer, and we always got the answers we needed, and we moved forward right along. We are going to produce a lot of electricity here, so that's kind of exciting. It's a good use of my land, I think, to help society.
So, a couple of other things to note that kind of differentiate this, and these are just smaller points. They don't use the same type of inverters. Generally speaking, and this, again, I'm speaking also from a higher level, I'm not an engineer, but generally speaking, with these utility scale projects, you have large inverters that go kind of on the center. With these type of community, the inverters are smaller, and they go behind the panels. I'm certainly not saying that even the large projects make a lot of noise, because I don't believe that they do, but these will make, these make even less noise than that. So.
We are on Aitkins Hidden Acres Cheese and Buffalo.
Rather than me trying to explain kind of the process of developing, we have a really cool time lapse video that shows that actual project being developed, and that's the next one. Now. Generally speaking, when, first of all, the sites that we picked were, I think, were really good sites. But generally speaking, when people have issues, it kind of, and as you can see, it kind of goes into four categories. The main one are concerns about what's in the panels, and, and issues with toxicity about the panels. The second is property values, what happens to property values around the parcel. The third is wildlife, vegetation, and erosion, and then, of course, the fourth is the benefits to the county, and, yeah, and the county residents. So, firstly, there's two types of panels, and sometimes you hear people, and I heard someone that had an issue with this before, that were talking about cadmium and some stuff along those lines. Those are mostly in something called polycrystalline panels. They're, from my understanding, they're very rarely used anymore. Certainly, we've never used them in any of our projects, nor will we ever use them. We use something called monocrystalline panels. And this is kind of a good example of what the actual panels consist of. Aluminum frame tempered glass, with tempered glass, an encapsulate, solar cells which are made out primarily of silicon, like 90% silicon, and silver, which are actually, those lines that you see, those are silver, followed by a back sheet of aluminum and then a junction box underneath. Yep, and like I said, so there, those are the majority of the, of the, what the panels are made of. They're also warranted for a period of 25 years, which means that if a panel breaks, the panels will be replaced in, by a manufacturer warranty. So, that, and it also means that at the end of the 25 years when we remove the panels, they're gonna have some value. They're gonna be worth, I think they're, they're rated to something about 90% of the, of the original. They produce no glare. We often put these right next to runways. In fact, that's a really ideal spot for solar, mainly because of the limitations of what you could build right next to runways. When we put them right next to runways, they require an FAA glare study, and we, that's very common to do, and we've never had any problem with glare. And when you think about it, it makes sense, because panels are designed to absorb light, and that's where they get energy. So, the more glare that comes out of the panels, the less of a job, the less efficient that they're doing, and the less of a job that they're getting, they're doing actually with energy. They're also designed to melt at around 1,000 degrees Celsius, a much higher melting point than grass fire or residential fire. There was a good example of this when there was a, there was a fire under a property, I think it was in Essex County, and there were, you know, I've discussed some of the concerns with Essex, with the Essex County Fire Chief, and the interesting thing about it is, this was just, it turned out it was just a grass fire, and the interesting thing about it was that the panels, even though the grass fire continued for a while underneath it, the panels were actually fine and didn't, didn't melt, which shows that they're generally made. Now, that was a different project, it wasn't a project related to us, but that shows kind of the strength of some of these. And they have little to no effect on solar and property values. And what we've done is I've provided several different reports. Most of the, some of the reports show about a 2% increase in projects near, or in home values near solar projects. Now, I don't necessarily know, I think 2% is a very low number, but the point is that we have about three or four studies that we provided to you that show that there's, there hasn't been very much of a relation, property values in solar projects. And wildlife vegetation, so the big thing that we do is we replace, we put underneath it, we use the, the Virginia Pollinator Pledge, which uses a friendly native seed mix that goes underneath it. It allows things like butterflies and bees in nature to grow, or, yeah, and it's cut approximately, I think, around two or three times a year, or as needed, so that it doesn't go over the panels. So, this is one of my favorite slides. It shows the difference, that picture kind of shows the difference between a deep seeded root mix and what current farmland is. Obviously, we need farmland, and I'm certainly not making any digs at farmland, because we all need to eat, but this shows kind of some of the additional benefits of putting a solar project there. Mainly, if you look at the left of that picture, it shows what the deep seeded root mix does as compared to what, compared to what corn and wheat does to the grass in terms of water retention. Some, some more of the benefits are, are listed down there. Also have benefits to local residents. You know, we increase, it increases the power lines between the substation and the project. Oftentimes, that's required in order to build these. No chemicals used on the land, unlike with farming, and of course, the economic advantages. To give you an idea of how much the project costs, it's about $2 million to megawatt. And as you've heard previously, and I'm sure you've heard from everyone that comes up here, this is tremendous benefit for having this economic development. I'd say somewhere between 20 and 30 part-time jobs per project, and about two full-time jobs per project. So, we have two projects, and the best part about both of these projects is that they're very, they're already very, they're screened very, very, very well. The first one is N C N, what we would call internally N C N 3. You could get an idea of the size, it's about. It is about, and the reason, yep, it is about 13.5 acres. And it's, yeah, like I said, no one's gonna, I don't believe that anybody's gonna be able to see it, based off of the location that it's at, and then, if we could just show the other one. The other one is Larry Davis Project, which is also, as you could see, it's very well screened, even from the start, on all sides. The only place that, you know, there's some road frontage, which of course, as your plans and conditions talk about, would be well screened. And even, even from the beginning, it's very little bit of road front. I think it's about 140 feet of road frontage that would even be able to be seen from the beginning. So, that, that's pretty much it. You know, I'm, like I said, I'm here for any questions. I'm sure if there's any public comments, or I'm here to answer any questions in support. So, we looked over the, the conditions, and for the most part, we, we actually, we don't have any issues with any of the conditions, with the exception of, there's one point in it where instead of IPS solar, I think it's in Condition 6, it, it has a different solar company's name, but outside of that, we agree to all the conditions.
We have seen all the conditions, and are basically agreeing to them all?
Yes.
Anybody have any questions of it?
Yeah, I got a question. I'm still, I had paperwork on 125-4-3, which is 75 acres, and then we talked about it some more, and went back and looked at the other proposal, and yeah, I think you're looking at 125-4-2, but I just want to make sure you know which one you're doing.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, so just to clarify, because I don't have the parcel numbers memorized by heart, we're, we're looking at the Larry Davis Project right now?
No, that, no, I'm looking, this is a 1 on 20.
Yes, sir.
I know we got that one, Larry Davis is straight, because that was our issue, too.
Yes, sir.
We straightened it out.
Yes, sir, so we, I do believe we, we've double-checked it, we've made some revisions, which is, which is, if you, if you notice, the, the amount that I said was, inside the panels was different than, actually, and that's another revision that we would need to make to the, to the total conditions list, I do believe. It's actually, the, the actual solar panel and the fence for that N C N project is 13.5 acres, and I, I do believe that, I think it says 18 point something on the conditions.
Yeah, it was 18.
Yeah, so that would be a change that we need to, you know, I assume that the conditions for N C N 3 match the conditions for Larry Davis. I did not look at the specific conditions for Larry Davis to check specifically about the, about those particular numbers. Although I, I do believe Evan did, and Evan's actually here, I'm sorry, I forgot to introduce him. Evan Carlson is also here by Zoom as well.
Hi. I'm here, man, computer, and couldn't be there in person, but yes, the parcel ID numbers are 114-2 and 125-4-2, and I have reviewed the conditions, and we have no objections to the conditions as proposed, other than changing the name, our name, and we have no objections to the conditions as proposed by the prior project either, so we're gonna try and make this as easy as we can for you.
Oh, Mr. Carlson, just to interject, the tax map for N C N is definitely 125-4-2, and also, if we could backtrack to the narrative, because you had in the narrative and the application originally, that it was going to have 18 of the, go back to Condition 7, 18 acres of the 21.09, but that's not correct. It needs to be 13 acres of the 21.09?
Yes, as we have, we revised the site plan through the development process, and through the course of those revisions, we have arrived at a more detailed plan, and the size of the system is labeled on the most current site plans, and that, that label is accurate. One of the projects, I believe, is 14.5, the other is 13.5.
Okay, if you could, for both cases, 21 S U P 285 and 21 S U P 286, please send with your application all revisions to me tomorrow, so that we can have that on file, because your original application, introductions, and where we are today, we need to make sure that we have this correctly in a public format.
Yes, sir, we, that, yes, they, we did submit a revised narrative to correct those issues as well as revised site plans, so I can send some sort of confirmation that, of the series of events, and. and which version is the most current.
Send me, I do not have anything from you for the revisions on both of these. If you could send both of those to me, showing the new site plan and the acreage on the request, that would be great.
I, I certainly can. These, and I, I can, I can forward you the, yeah. We can certainly do that for you, I mean.
Thank you.
So, you're not connecting to the main lines, which you're saying you're connecting to the residential lines. When is the electric company gonna start the operation for that?
A lot depends on, a lot depends on when they're gonna be done studying. The program, I believe, opens in part in October. But it, it's possible that it could either go through the community solar program or do what's called an RFP directly through the electric company. And based off that, the timeline might be a little bit different. Evan, do you, if it's community solar, do you want to talk a little bit more about specifically when?
Yes. So, the, the community solar program is new. Again, community solar, it's exactly what it sounds like. It's a bunch of people grouping together, putting their solar panels on this site, and being treated as though it's up on their roofs. It's about people. That's why we're plugging the distribution network.
When will it be built, if it goes the community solar route and not the RFP route?
So, the, the community solar program opens up, the, the opportunity to apply to the state program opens up this fall, October 1st. And in order to be eligible for that application, you need to have a, your, your land use permits in place completed, and you need to have your interconnection application completed from the utility. These projects have been studied by the utility, and that process is nearly complete. However, the, there's a limited amount of projects that will be approved, and they happen on a first come, first served basis. We don't know how quickly it'll fill up. So, i- if there are a lot of projects, it's possible that the allotment of community solar gardens for this year will already have, will be too late because we're, we're gonna miss the October 1st deadline. However, we don't know that. It, it might take a while to fill up. And so, we don't know. It's, it's a new program, and we're certainly gonna try and get it done as quickly as we can. And then, the alternative is that sometimes the utility is just stepping in and buying these projects without the, them going into the state program. And if the utility decides that they want to step in and do that, then all of a sudden, now you're, now you're ready to go again. Now, you're shovel-ready. So, to answer your question, anywhere from a, groundbreaking would be anywhere from a year to three years from now.
And, you know, I guess it's something that I should have emphasized that I didn't emphasize before. These projects are very, very, very important to us. And obvi- obviously, that goes, that probably goes without saying. But to give you an idea, if we sign up maybe 100 or 110 program, projects in the, in the entire Virginia area, just to get past the study, meaning that Dominion says that we're able to build, that the area is good, that they have capacity on the substation, all those things, that might bring those 110 projects down to maybe eight to 10. So, these projects are, are very special in that, in that, in that we're able to build, and we're super excited about building them. And, you know, obviously, it might seem a little bit smaller than the previous projects that you've seen before, but, but they're very, very, very important to us, obviously, which is why we're here.
And the commissioners got any questions? Next step would be a motion for sending forward a public hearing.
That motion?
Have a motion?
Second.
Motion first and seconded, all in favor, raise your right hand. Answer is unanimously, six out of six. See you next month.
As for both projects?
Both projects, yeah. Both projects.
Thank you very much, very much appreciated.
Welcome.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear that. Were, did, did they both get?
Yes, they both just got passed on to next week, next month.
For public hearing?
Public hearing next month.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Nikki gonna call? You gonna call the next case, Nikki?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, the next case that we're discussing under old business is actually 21 ZTA S U P 287. Landowner James Burmaster and Carl Burmaster. The applicant, James Burmaster and Michelle Soltes. Tonight with us, we have Carl Burmaster, who's gonna speak along with James Burmaster sitting in the back. And Michelle has joined us via Zoom, and I'm trying to pull up their introduction from last month.
Mr. Chick?
What we did last month, Mr. Burmaster on tax map 158 parcel 11, which has about 104.7 acres at 5481 Mount Rush Highway. He would, his request is to add a zoning text amendment for an outdoor event venue in agricultural A1 zoning district and obtain a special use permit for that purpose. Yes. Presented in August of last month was this introduction along with multiple conditions. What Mr. Burmaster has done, there were 16 conditions, and you have, each of you have at your workstations, his rebuttals, if you will, to some of the conditions. He's also with us tonight to discuss his application and his intent with the special use permit, the nature of the events that he'd like to hold, the number of events. I know that we put in here up to 5,000. He'd like to hold events with crowds much smaller. He does have a statement from the Health Department in regard to bathroom facilities and, and health facilities. And I believe he may have a statement from Peter Francisco Soil and Water discussing the lake and the dam on the property. So, Mr. Burmaster?
Before you start, Mr. Burmaster, there, let me reiterate that I will abstain from this application because I do assist him in his timber management. I did, I did that with the introduction, but I just wanted to make sure, put it back on the record.
So noted.
Now, to the planning commission, I have also included, what we had discussed in August was to take a look at some neighboring counties. Their zoning ordinances and other outdoor event venues that are held. A county most close to us is Nelson County, and they hold a music festival every year, possibly twice a year. It's called Lockin. They also have many different examples of this type of tourism industry. I have included appendix A from their zoning ordinance. Just for us to have a point of reference as we further this discussion with Mr. Burmaster. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
In regard to condition number five for his development process, Carl does have a rebuttal for number five, nine, 10, and 13. Could we let him discuss those a little bit and maybe tell you a little bit more about the types of events he wants to hold here?
Okay. Definitely. How y'all doing?
Ah.
Oh, yeah, as far as Dominion Stock, that number's way down. You know, I know you was concerned about that, and, you know, my intentions are for this. I have a lot of family also, a lot of nieces, nephews, and all the people that try to get married. And I've, I've went to these venues, 16,000, 12,000, 8,000, $6,000 for a person to get married. And most of your average households can't afford stuff like that. And as far as, it's like a two-part thing for me. The wedding venue, I, I want to build like a 3,000 square foot barn frame-style building. Or people with average incomes, below incomes can come and get married in a beautiful place. They don't have to spend a lot of money to do it. And even, I don't know how I would have to work some type of sliding scale. I have no clue yet, because this is new to me. But I want people that can't afford stuff like this in Buckingham County and even surrounding counties, people to come here and afford to do that. You know, because there's a lot of people that, that can't. And I know many that can't. I'm not out to make a rich, get rich off of this stuff. I'm out to help people and to let people enjoy what we have over there. As far as the, the number of people on the outdoor venue, I would much rather have a pavilion and have a weekly, you know, local band come out with, with blankets and people. People come out with their families and spend time out there with, you know, have vendors out there serving food or whatever. Where people can hang out and have a good time in Buckingham County. Because I know, I've been here 17 years, and I don't know any place like that where people can go to enjoy with their families or anything. And that back field back there is fairly large. You know, any music being played on your concerns, as Lynn David, would be pointing towards the east, okay? Most bands' decimal levels are 95, 96, you know, which means you're considering having a conversation and still listening to music. You don't want that loud music beating you to death or anything like that. You know what I mean? I just think it's a great opportunity for Buckingham County to have a place to go, kick back, relax with their families, with their children, put their blankets out, their chairs, and just have a good time. You know, do I want to have a large event? Maybe, one day, not right away. You know what I mean? But if I did, I've already talked to Billy Kidd, you know, about how much it would cost to have certain cars out there or whatever, and make sure this, coming out the driveway, everybody was checked. Nobody was leaving there in an unsafe manner, because I don't want anybody to get hurt at all. You know, I'm, I'm really doing this for the county. I mean, I'm, I'm not a rich guy. Y'all see me out there working. I'll, I'll get in the ditch with the best of you and dig all day long. You know what I mean? I mean, I'm doing, me and my son are doing this on our own. You know, I mean, we're not, hopefully, the banks will help us out a little bit later if it gets approved, but we're basically doing this on our own right now. And as far as the conditions, I mean, I don't have them in front of me. I know one of them was the erosion and sediment. Miss Snotty and her engineer came out to the property. Showed them where I was gonna put everything. Everything was fine. It wouldn't affect the spillway. It wouldn't affect the water. It wouldn't do anything. I had Paul come out from the county for the septic system, showed him what I had, you know, my intentions were. And he drew me out on a piece of paper right in front of me. He just drew me, this is what you gotta do right here. And so, he was all on board with that. The advertising part is my most difficult part because if, if I'm gonna have local bands come out here for people to come each weekend, I'm gonna have to advertise. And in the language last time, they said a major event, you could only advertise with a major event, and this would be classified as a major event. So, how are you gonna get somebody to come out there to hang out and whoever's out there if you can't advertise at all? So, I guess, I guess what I'm trying to say is, I'm trying to make this, it really is for Buckingham County. Am I trying to make a little money on it too? Yes, because I like to pay off my place, whatever. But these 15,000, $16,000 wedding venues is, is a joke. I'd rather make it to where average families should come out, get married, not spend the fortune, and have a great time. Simple as that.
So, what you want to start off with is a wedding venue, more or less?
Yes. So, I'm gonna start with the wedding venue. Because the reason being, because the wedding venue, if I build a 3,000 to 4,000 square foot pavilion, you gotta have bathrooms, okay? Because, you know, brides gotta have their own bathrooms, and they gotta get all prettied up and all that stuff. But then, even if the weather, inclement weather, I can still have line dancing, square dancing. I have a friend of mine that teaches line dancing and country dancing at Ensbroke all the time. They could call her Dancing Cat. She's, I'd be more than glad to come up there and get people on the ball up there. And I think it would be, it's a great opportunity for Buckingham County. Even, like I said, I've been here 17 years. I, there's nothing to do here. There's nothing to do, except to go get something to eat, and that's about it. There ain't much there to do that, you know what I mean? So, after 17 years, pizza and other stuff gets a little, gets a little old. What other conditions? I don't have the conditions in front of me.
There were 16 of them. I'll be happy to provide them to you.
No, 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 just the ones I've.
Oh, the three. So, the site plan, talking about the 4,000 square foot wedding venue. The cabin on the property will be refurbished and inspected per code. Initial setup, large pavilion. You talked about.
Well, yeah. The original site plan that y'all have up there, the, the red is where the, if y'all aren't, you can probably still pull it up, but the, the red building, go ahead and pull it up. Let me, let me look at it, because I haven't actually looked at it since I did. Only thing that's not on the site plan is the, is the pavilion. I had Tommy come out from the county. There's two big, long turkey barns out there. It's got a bunch of old-school rough-cut lumber. And I wasn't sure I was gonna be able to use that, but it's in really good shape. And he told me that I could use that for the pavilions, but not for the building. There it is right there. So, let me look where the lake is. Okay, yeah. You see the little red, the red building right there? The lake would be on the left, correct?
Gaius, or where you have drawn?
The one I drew up, the one I drew up.
Next page.
Oh, no, no. So, go back to the, don't show them that one I drew up. That's a little scary. Didn't I give you a different one? I gave you another one.
Yeah, because that one, that one's going over on somebody else's.
Yeah, that's, that's a different one. I gave you one from, I emailed you one that we used last time. I had a red block on it. We had it up last time. I just don't know.
Are we talking about these? Are we talking about this one?
Yes, ma'am.
Is this, is what you're talking about?
Yes, ma'am. You see the red block on your, that is where the pavilion would go?
Oh, okay.
Got it? Okay.
There we go. Okay.
Okay.
The two big white turkey barns there would be, would be taken down. It wouldn't be destroyed because of, there's a lot of really good lumber inside that can be used to build pavilions with, and which would, you know, really be good. All the, all the buildings put back there, it's only gonna be probably two pavilions and one wedding venue. The first red block to the left of the second white building is an old log cabin. I've already got all the trees around that taken down. They were actually lifting up the building. Started to refurbish that. The block to the left is an old cemetery. Back from the 1800s, I'm gonna refurbish that, make sure it's, I went down to the museum, actually found a platte where all the stones went. And I'm gonna put it back just like it's supposed to be, which is great. And then, there is another graveyard that's on top of the hill down there across the spillway, but it's not marked, but it is a graveyard. So, I'm just gonna, you know, I'm gonna make everything look really good. I'm gonna try to keep everything rustic, all bone-style framing. And that one red building will be the only wedding venue right there. Septic field will come back towards the road, not towards the water. Okay, that's the way that he told me that it had to be done, Paul did. And just to the left of that will be where, you know, the power will go down. So, nothing's gonna affect the spillway. Nothing's gonna affect anything to do with the lake. There's no runoff. There's no anything. And it's, it's actually pretty simple. That front field will be parking that patch of trees right there. When she was concerned about, you know, the cars parking that patch of trees, I'm gonna take out right here by the road. And so, it'll, I can dead-center the pull-in for parking at the optimal spot to where it's best. And I did have a traffic impact study done, and he came out and looked at the site. He said everything looked good. If I had to put in turn lanes, I could do it in gravel. So, but that'd be down the road. That'd be y'all's conditions. Have to do that.
What other condition were you concerned with?
Just the advertising condition, the one that where I could be able to let people know we're having a, you know, what if it's a weekly, just a little local band come out, put their blanket on the floor, have some pizza. I thought about putting like a, you know, a little pizza oven or something on the end of the pavilion, because I know you can't do it in a building, but you can do it in a pavilion. Am I correct with that?
Talk about a food truck or something.
Food truck first? Whatever we gotta do, whatever is, need to do first.
Health department.
Flip some pizzas or something. We'll see, but we'll see how it goes. But, you know, I just think it's a great opportunity for Buckingham. I really do. I mean, I'm gonna start small. I mean, I'm gonna start small, uh, and try to let it grow, but I just want people to come out and have fun.
Well, Mr. Burmaster, if you're gonna start small, then that's different than what was presented in your.
Well, no, I mean, I mean, I don't want, we can drop the five thousand number.
Do you wanna, okay, the five thousand number, did you wanna scale this back? I think Mr. Allen asked about a wedding venue first and then.
Yes, wedding venue first. But, you know, but I would still, I mean, if you had a wedding venue first, couldn't you still have a local band in there, like, you know?
Sure, wedding venues, most time, everybody.
Yeah, so, you know.
I don't mind it anyway. I just finished five girls getting married, so.
The only thing I didn't put on that, that site map was a pavilion. Open-air pavilion, not closed-in, it's open-air.
I'm gonna put a number.
Well, what number would y'all recommend? How's that?
I mean, most time on weddings, probably two hundred, two hundred fifty, big, big wedding, you know?
What about on the music side?
Music side, I mean, it, it depends on what the name of the ba- band is.
Paul Burmaster.
Oh, okay. But I mean, it, I, I don't know, I don't know what weekend it is.
How about a thousand? Not, I'm just saying if we have a, a band there and, you know, whatever, you know, um, that's, I mean, I know I'll have to come back if it ever goes up with that, but I say wedding venue, you're right, two to three hundred people. I couldn't see more than that many people coming and sitting on blankets from Buckingham, I really, you know, honestly, I couldn't. Um, and I know I'd have to come back in front of golf, I wanted to go up more. And the only other condition that y'all put in the condition was, now I'm thinking about it, was I had to give a ninety-day notice for a band, and that's almost impossible for, if you have, if you have a band come out each week, a local band or open mic or dance, whatever, it's almost hard to, ninety days in advance is, is a stretch.
Now, Mr. Burmaster, so what you're asking is actually a little different from your narrative, which is okay. That's what the planning commission wanted to do, is have this discussion with you to find out the nature of what you wanted to do. So we have a couple of things right now. A wedding venue, which would be one S U P. And then we're still at music festival, even though it's less than five thousand, but there is an, um, an S U P that could, um, in an A-one for a music festival. And that's, in essence, what you're asking for in the second part of this right now, smaller, not five thousand, but one thousand.
I thought, I thought I'd say, I said events, music.
There, there's a lot of things in your application, a lot, lots of activities.
I tried to put everything in there, so, because you, you know, I was told I had to come back and resubmit everything, so I was trying to throw it all in there, you know, just in case.
At your wish list.
At my wish list, yes, sir.
Absolutely, and that's what we discussed initially because you were gonna start off, you know, very strong, and you still are, but just, um, a little bit smaller than where you were to kind of, you know,
Just a little.
Everything in order so that you can do that well. And then if you have to come back for an S U P or something different.
And if everything goes well and everything's working out right, I don't think I'd have a problem with, with, you know, with the planning commission or the board, if everything.
Okay, then to the commission, I would ask, uh, maybe it would be better, from an administration standpoint, for Mr. Burmaster and I to take a look, have him maybe amend, revise his application to include wedding event venue and music festival for those under one thousand? And bring back similar conditions for other cases that have had those, kind of scale back maybe? His plan at this time, just to include those two activities and bring this.
Yeah, or like church groups, like if church groups wanted to come, or, or non-responders, first responders wanted to come, nonprofits wanted to come, you know, stuff like that, you know what I mean? Because they don't, there's really no way to.
Okay, so how do the commission feel about having administration work a little bit more closely with Mr. Burmaster to get his venue truly representative of the events that he wants to have right now at this point? Grow and, and it changes to the full intent of his original application, he could come back to the county at that time?
Well, I put it twenty-five hundred instead of a thousand, but myself.
Uh, twenty-five hundred, I like that number. I'm just trying to keep everybody happy, you know, because I really want this to go through, I mean, straight on.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I mean, we had to try to pull up there and then we had three to four thousand people up there.
Kind of gauge it to the, to the tractor pull.
I'd put at least twenty-five hundred myself, if, if you don't want to go more.
Say thirty-five?
Don't push it.
Anyway.
I would think there would be a way to wordsmith it a little bit, to use buzzwords like private, non-commercial functions like we see in Nelson, so that we can encompass everything you're trying to do in one application.
I know Nelson, pre-COVID, pre-COVID Nelson had a lock-in event, it was three days, many, many bands, camping. I don't want, I want zero camping, I don't want overnight stuff like that at all, you know, I don't even want to go there. And they have one event at the end of the year in September. So their events, they got a three hundred fifty acre farm, tons of people, wild, you know? I don't want crazy, crazy, crazy wild, not, a little crazy wild, but not too bad, you know what I mean? You know what I'm saying?
Be good if you all got together, I would think.
So we will just let this go for tonight and you get with Nikki?
I'm hoping for that.
Can y'all come back next month?
That'd be fine.
And maybe we can get somewhere.
Great.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And mainly you'll talk about those two things, a wedding venue and a festival.
Thank you, Nikki. Thank all y'all.
You are, you are.
Thirty-five number sounded good a little while ago.
I, oh, Lord.
I started walking, I walked with one cane until I started working on this house up here, now I'm walking with two.
Oh, no. You too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Goodbye.
Hi.
Where'd she go? Get back before we start.
Next case, I guess?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, under new business tonight, we have introduction of case twenty-one, S U P two ninety-one. This would be John Yoder. Our applicant is John Yoder, located at five forty-one Allen's Lake Road. This tax map is one thirteen, parcel ten, it contains approximately nine point four eight acres. Um, it's an A-one agricultural zoning district, and the applicant wishes to obtain a special use permit for the purpose of operating a commercial sawmill. The zoning ordinance does not permit a commercial sawmill as a permitted by right use in an agricultural A-one zoning district. However, within the A-one district, a commercial sawmill may be permitted by Buckingham County Board of Supervisors by special use permit following recommendation by the planning commission in accordance with this ordinance and the Code of Virginia. Planning commission may recommend and the board may impose conditions to ensure protection of the district if the special use permit is approved. This case came to the attention of the zoning administrator by way of a complaint. After investigation and meeting with the landowner, it was discovered that a sawmill was operating in violation of the zoning ordinance. Initial complaint was made in early July twenty twenty-one, and the building was discovered, but no sound of a saw operating at that time. However, the sawmill was operating when another complaint was made in late July twenty twenty-one. After discussion with Mr. Yoder, it was discovered he was purchasing logs timbered off-site and operating a commercial sawmill. At this time, Mr. Yoder was informed that he was not operating in compliance with the zoning ordinance and was instructed to cease operations immediately. After further review of permit records, Mr. Yoder obtained a building permit in June twenty twenty-one for a forty-by-sixty building for the purpose of farm use as indicated on his zoning building permit application. The sawmill was operating in this forty-by-sixty building. Mr. Yoder does need to provide information to the planning commission and board of supervisors explaining the intent and nature of the request for the permit in June of twenty twenty-one. I have listed ten conditions. Mr. Yoder is here with us in the audience. I will ask him if he would step forward to the podium to assist in this discussion for his request.
Evening.
What is the footage you're talking about? How many feet we cutting, I'm cutting up? Thousand feet, ten thousand feet, hundred thousand feet, weekly, daily?
I don't have a footage there. Like always, just to, I work for me, my family, I might have an employee or two. At this point, maybe five, ten thousand feet, four feet a week.
And that's the other thing I've heard that, that you count on increasing, and that doesn't bother me. What does bother me is the road, Allen's Lake Road, we got a lot of older folks and young children on that road a lot. And I just hate to see the amount of trucks coming back and forth on that road, uh, hauling to it. I've got a lot of locations that I would love to see you move it to and have it done, but I haven't got a, a, uh, anybody to properly say it's okay yet. I'm not against you cutting wood, I'm, my family's been in the wood business all their life. I have no problem with that, it's, it's just the, uh, amount of traveling on that road, I'd rather not see. But, uh, I'm, I'm hoping to get you another place, and maybe we can work it out a little quicker. You probably talked to him about it really, but, uh, we can talk about this more later because I hadn't got an answer on it yet. But, uh, that's, that's just my thoughts of it right now because it's a dead-end road and it's a smaller road, and you get a lot of trucking trailers coming down that road. It's gonna tear it all to pieces, plus the, the people on the road, the drivers that rode, that wouldn't be a good thing, in my opinion. But, uh.
Mr. Yoder, do you have plans to expand the sawmill, to make it larger?
Uh, I don't really, like I said, I, I just want work for me and my, my family. I, I have no intention of, of expanding, but you never know.
How many tractor trailers do you anticipate a day?
Uh, like I have in my narrative, but I wrote down, uh, about up to three a day.
Three a day? Yeah, I, I, I'm familiar with the area, and I, I do agree with, uh, Mr. Allen. It's not the best location for a sawmill because of the fact of the getting in and out with the logistics of the trucks and all. But it is nice to know that you're looking for another site for them, honestly. I, I too, I'm in the timber business and I don't want to.
Yeah, I don't want to stop you, I'm, I'm just trying.
Stop anybody from making a living, but, uh.
Trying to get about a location for you and the people around you.
You understand what the problem is, don't you?
I'm, I'm just trying to find out, yeah.
Well, if you were operating this sawmill out of the trees that were growing on your property, and you were cutting them for boards for a shed you were gonna build, you wouldn't be up here. But you were buying logs that had been commercially cut someplace else, bringing them to your shop, cutting them into boards or, as you say, railroad ties, whatever, and selling them back. So you've really got a commercial operation going in the middle of an agricultural residential area. That, in fact, is the problem. I don't know if it's your problem or it's our problem, but it's somebody's problem.
Yeah.
I would assume if it's our problem, it's gotta be your problem, you're gonna inherit it. Any other commissioners have any other questions or thoughts, or?
I'm just catching up on this case, but was the purpose of the forty-by-sixty building initially to house this operation of the sawmill?
It was.
When you initially applied, what was your intention there? For the building permit? Was your intention that you were gonna be buying logs from, uh, other people and cutting them for them?
Uh, yes, it was.
Was that indicated to anybody when you were in the building permit process? Danny, does, uh, Mr. Yoder have any knowledge of who you're talking to and so forth about a place for him to operate?
He was asked about it in the beginning, but they told him no, so, because of, uh, zoning processes. But we're trying to figure that out now, get that right, and be a good place for you to go, man. But I, I don't feel right about mentioning the name right now.
I understand.
Because I don't have a proper yes yet. But I will notify you as soon as I can get to answer.
Supposing he can find a place for you to go, would that be something you would consider doing? Pardon me?
I'm not sure, I might think of relocating. I, I just always to have my work at home with my family.
Well, maybe that's, it's in the right work for that particular place. You know, relocation's a distinct possibility, possibly.
Close by, you know where I'm talking about. Think you would like it if everything works out, but.
Want to make a motion on something to do then, while y'all are doing all this?
I like putting on hold right now until we.
Okay, so you're suggesting that we.
Then I can, uh, maybe we'll have a special meeting or something to come back and get it straight once we figure it's on.
So you want to make a motion for something? Make it.
Make a motion to put this on hold until I figure out another deal and can talk to him more about it.
Okay, do I have a second?
A second.
Have a first and a second, all in favor of, uh, Danny's motion? Raise your right hand. Anatomous, okay. Will be put on hold until something has worked out one way or the other?
Hopefully that'll be shortly. All right, now to. That's you up.
Next case under new business is the introduction of case twenty-one, Z T A, S U P two ninety-two. Landowner and applicant is Historic Buckingham Incorporated. Martha Lewis is, as president, is here with us tonight. The tax map is one twenty-four, parcel ninety, it contains approximately forty acres, and it's located at eighty-four Lee Wayside Road, Buckingham, in the Mayville Magisteria. Current zoning is V C one Village Center. The applicant wishes to obtain a special use permit for the purpose of holding public events at the Historic Village location to include, but not limited to, Indian Relic Show, Fall Farm Fest, Spooky Hollow Drive-Thru, Village Christmas Market, Vino and the Village, Primitive Technology Day, and Mayfest. At this time, there is, there is not a use provided for this request. The zoning administrator is asking the planning commission to add a zoning text amendment to add community service organization programs to the list of special uses in a Village Center V C one zoning district. By nature, the public events listed by the applicant will be defined as programs held by a community service organization. The applicant is asking the planning commission to recommend a public hearing date to hear this request. Let's see, the zoning ordinance does not permit public events as listed by the applicant as a by right use or permitted by a special use in a zoning district. In an effort to encompass Historic Buckingham Incorporated and other similar-type groups and activities related to. and activities related to public events, the request to add community service organization programs as a zoning text amendment to the list of special uses permitted by a special use permit in VC1 is requested and an application for a special use permit for that purpose as well. Historic Buckingham Incorporated has held many events over the past years and only recently was it discovered that the additional documentation was needed for the variety of community events held. The property was rezoned from A1, excuse me, to VC1 in nineteen ninety-nine. Historic Buckingham Inc. has been gracious to work with the zoning administrator to ensure compliance for all public events held. I've listed just a suggestion of ten conditions that may be considered. Not only is Martha Lewis president with us, but Bobby Snoddy, a member of the board member, is with us as well to discuss any questions or concerns.
I'm thinking of murder a text amendment. I'm kinda not liking to add another text amendment, but if you read on the VC1 special use permit, it uses everything on A1 and everything on B1. And I know it doesn't have a specific what they were saying, but I mean, it's got even down to fairgrounds and music festivals or similar large events. We've got all that. Why do we need to change? I think it'll take care of everything that you're doing. If y'all would look at it and be satisfied yourself first. I don't know if you have or not, but... Oh, okay.
Let's just get right to it.
Go right here. Go right here. Who did?
Have to lay it to other individuals. Called into question our use. Since two thousand seven.
Yeah.
We know what's there. Adding community service. Or I put us on the same level as fire departments, churches. House Right House. Adams, Ms. Ford. All we've ever done for the county is good. Got called into question for doing it. Now, all of a sudden, this year, we get called carpet in essence. Quite frankly, and some of it's at a smaller scale than we've done in the past.
What kind of event is it that's causing all this ruckus?
Sort of a mini... Something akin to what's unknown. It was the first time we'd ever been approached about something like that, about us. All, quite frankly.
You got a regular mess going on.
Oh, kidding, Dan. If it was something that we could just say, it fits in for those other states. Based upon what we've held in the past, I want... What's the next one?
Bettering.
Yes.
Yes, and you're all invited.
I wouldn't cancel.
Probably everyone to me. The events, we will not be canceled. We've worked closely, myself, our county attorney, and our county administrator, to ensure that the events that have been scheduled will continue.
I understand that, but what I'm saying is, is just... Us by...
Well...
Just concerning at the least.
I'm gonna interject. The events that you hold are definitely community oriented. I think I have talked to Martha Lewis. There's no one that would be more upset with not having these events than my own youngest child. What we truly want to do with the event... Yes, it wasn't that you were called onto the mat for the intent of the programs that you hold. It was just that the other organizations wanted to utilize this space. This is why I don't compare the activities and the events that are held at Historic Buckingham as something that's akin to a fair or some type of festival. This is truly an organization that has the community at the heart of its every single event and intention. That is why I was asking for the zoning text amendment of a community service organization. Yes, sir.
That would be fine. I have no problem with a text amendment that puts it...
Has such a text amendment been written or proposed yet?
My proposal in the request, when the application came through to hold the public events, when we look through the VC1, which, yes, does allow for the by right and special use permits in A1 and I believe a B1, there are certain events held that are music festivals and fairgrounds and things of that nature. If you've been to an event at Historic Buckingham, it is not like a fairground or a music festival. This is truly things that are at the heart of showing the young and the middle aged and those that are older in age, things that have happened in this county. Why the importance of the history, the buildings that have been put there. If you ever go to Indian Relic Day and you see Spencer Adams and all of the individuals who come with arrowheads to teach the children, and myself as well, going back to the children, there are field trips from the middle school I know and probably the primary and elementary as well that attend to see why these buildings were moved, what happened originally in these buildings. There are pictures there and individuals who tell the story of Historic Buckingham. So to me, it was not a fairground or some type of festival. Certainly, it's a celebration of sorts of Historic Buckingham and the things that brought us to where we are today.
Haven't you missed something?
You have some words that you could eloquently tell us that would satisfy this young lady?
It's not that I don't have any satisfaction. I've ridden on Bud Witten's mule cart, not with a grandchild yet, but if I live long enough, I hope that I will. And I've eaten all of the organic food that has been grown here in the area. I buy from the Boy Scouts when I go. I mean, there's no place... I mean, I really do enjoy attending these events. I won't be able to now, obviously. I'll be the one person on the list not to let in.
Bureaucracy at its finest.
It was like... It was out of the blue that we were... We had no idea. Doesn't open up the floodgates to everything that you don't want to see.
Have on with it. Would it solve any of the problem if you went back to whoever requested this thing? It said, "No, we can't do it."
Well, we've already done that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
That didn't work, huh?
It was a little revenge, I think, but unfortunately directed at us instead of it.
Yeah.
I will add that in the past few months, while Historic Buckingham and many other organizations very similar have been longstanding in our county, we do have newer organizations with that same community intent. We are contacted, I say "we," myself and our county administrator, Mr. Carter, we are contacted on a very regular basis with organizations that want to hold something very similar to a community service organization program on property in which the zoning does not allow. So even if they were able to hold those, we haven't had a use provided for that. So adding a community service organization program and allowing these other groups that are interested in reaching out to the community as well by way of children and backpacks and different events that will pull the people of this wonderful county together, they'd be able to apply for special use permits in different districts possibly as well. But the real intent of this is just for everyone to realize the number of organizations that either call us to hold events or that don't call us to hold the events and then the event is held and then we're questioned as to how and why and how did this person do? It's really to even the playing field. We want to make sure that the organizations that are holding these, that everything is proper and those next organizations that come through, which we want new organizations to come through and continue to support this community, but we want to make sure that we have a use that's provided for and we can explain that.
Not about why, but motivation. Forward. More than anything.
Oh.
It really was... It was really bothersome because we had worked. Whatever resolution... But we want you to be comfortable with that.
Having events that we don't charge for, there's no admission fee because we want families to come in and whatever you...
Anybody up here got any thoughts on how we're gonna handle this one?
I think the most important thing is let them be operational till we do.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I don't think we're stopping nothing right now.
We can't do...
Spooky Hollow.
Right.
Spooky Hollow.
They do, very much so.
It does have an effect, obviously, on traffic. If you've ever gotten hung up in the...
We have the fire department helping us every year. No, never an accident.
It's never been a problem.
We have four events left this year and I'm assuming that we can probably go ahead and complete those up through Christmas. Yep. Love to see some of y'all there.
Do we need a motion and the vote on whether or not they can continue?
No, I...
Would it help you? Would you feel better if we did?
I'm gonna defer to Mr. Wright for this part.
We're gonna do it.
I figured that.
While we wait for Mr. Wright, I know this is a mess enough with the special events, but with zoning, does this anyway have to be messier, like for Boy Scouts campouts and stuff? Because my own kid would be very disappointed, but absolutely. I didn't know if... And I know what the special events we're obviously addressing, but Nikki, do you have any?
Yeah.
We don't want that size of it.
Our events are three hundred and under, probably.
The applicant did state that they were gonna hold the events that are listed to include but not limited to, so if there were other events of like nature, or to hear the public hearing and to add this zoning text amendment to include a community service organization program, then since they didn't limit themselves... We're here with this introduction because after legal review and administration working together, an S U P is going to be...
That's the best way to do it?
Yes, sir.
Somebody wanna make a motion to send them on?
I'll go ahead and make a motion. But make a motion to go ahead and add the text amendment, is that what we want?
We'd wanna add a text amendment and they would want to attain a special use permit for that purpose.
Motion for public hearing?
Right. But I just wanna make sure what we're doing. Okay. Motion made.
Put a second.
A second, Abbott. Are you gonna have that? When will you... Can you move to public hearing without having it already written?
Without having what, Mr. Bigford?
Your text amendment. Right now, we got ideas, but it's nothing on paper. Are you gonna advertise it to the public?
For a community service organization? For the definition? Would you like a definition prior to the public hearing?
Yeah.
As long as you can get it written, so it's all...
Wide range right now.
Yes. Have to take care of that.
I just wanna expedite it if possible, don't want any snag. That's the only reason I'm asking that. But yes, so welcome to move this forward.
Y'all can continue all, everything you've got scheduled, right? That's not a hangup.
Oh, yeah.
See, that was the scary thing is what we...
Planning, yeah. We do about...
We have a first and a second. All in favor of approving what we just talked about? Raise your right hand. Anatomous. Y'all are approved for a public hearing next time.
There you go.
Thank you.
I'm sorry about that.
That's okay.
It'll bring us up to reports, Nikki. Oh, you got something else? It's very what?
Appealing.
Yes. You know... You know, if we're not- Hundred fifty acres or whatever. If we're not very cautious, though, we will have one of these in everybody's backyard in Buckingham County. As, 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 uh, citizens here. I know. It's sort of scary that it's what we know as the solar center of the world. Exactly.
Um, Mr. Chairman, under our zoning administrator and reports, I, um, don't necessarily have anything. Um, I may ask our county attorney if he has anything he'd like to discuss this evening. All right, and the only other thing, the building reports were included for, um, informational purposes. Have nothing further.
Somebody wanna make a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
First and second, it's all in favor. Raise your right hand. It is official. We are out in this before ten o'clock.
Thank you, thank you. Snap, crackle, pop.
Was this chair, sweet, sinking?
Yeah.
Yeah, it kept sinking.
It kept, it kept going down.
It was down, um...
Mm-hmm.
That was a long one.
Thank you.